Here.
Mr. Calley?
Here.
Mr. McDonald?
Here.
Ms. Shulist?
Here.
Mr. Magnner?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
President.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Senyard? Ms. Schilling?
Here.
Thank you. Feel free to join me for tonight's opening prayer and pledge. My Father, I thank you for tonight, the spring rains that you've continued to bring to our community. I ask for your wisdom and guidance this evening, and I appreciate all the blessings in my life. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I hear a motion on tonight's agenda?
Make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
Calley, Pape. Ms. Jones, do we have any citizens' comments this evening? Do we know, are there any citizens' comments signed up?
We have none tonight.
None, okay.
Did...
We need to approve the agenda.
Did you want me to call the roll?
You called the roll.
For approval of the agenda?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Please, go ahead.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
There are no citizens' comments.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion for approval of tonight's minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Full.
Second.
Mr. Calley, Mr. Pape?
I'm sorry.
Point of order.
Yes, it's the May fourteenth. The May fourteenth.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
It's okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is the approval of the minutes from the May fourteenth. Thank you very much.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Thank you. So, we have one item of old business tonight, that is PC Resolution PC twenty-one dash twenty-four. This is to reconsider the rezoning of Belvoir Phase Two, which is a fifty-two point nine acres, MAP twenty-one parcels, portion of sixty-two and sixty-three. The current zoning is RS forty. Requested zoning, R twenty. The property owner is Northwest Cove LLC. Mr. Greer, would you please read your staff report?
This project was sent back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration from the Board of Commissioners last Thursday night. There was additional information that was discovered after the recommendation took place at the prior Planning Commission meeting. Within your staff report, that was noted when we sent out the agenda, it would be read into the record. The update is on the back of the first sheet, Project Update. This item was placed on the agenda for the regularly scheduled June sixth, twenty twenty-four Board of Commissioner meeting. At that point, the BOC removed the item to send it back to the Planning Commission to reconsider its recommendation based on additional information that was provided by the owner developer. The owner developer provided a conceptual lot layout for Belvoir Phase Two to help address some of the concerns of the Planning Commission. The conceptual lot layout shows streams, stream buffers, two separate roadways connecting to the proposed Northwest Highway and forty-eight single-family residential lots. The conceptual lot layout shows fifteen lots located north of the proposed Northwest Highway and the remaining thirty-three lots south of the proposed Northwest Highway. The conceptual lot layout does provide a visual to show how a portion of Belvoir Phase Two can be developed. However, the conceptual lot layout is not part of the rezoning review and will not be considered for approval as part of the rezoning request. Staff did not recommend. The Planning Commission provided a favorable recommendation based on the initial submittal information. The reasons for staff's recommendations were as follows. First, the requested zone district of R twenty is not listed as an appropriate zone district for the property per the Fairview Forward twenty forty plan. R twenty with a pod overlay is noted as an appropriate zone district in the twenty forty plan, but not R twenty as a straight district. Related to the requested zoning is the minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet with the R twenty zone district in Phase One. Phase One of the Belvoir subdivision is zoned R forty, so the permitted lot size would be half the size of Phase One. Also, properties to the south are currently zoned Williamson County MGA one, meaning those properties would not have lots smaller than one acre if they were to stay within Williamson County. A final reason for staff's recommendation was not knowing if the proposed lots would front onto the and connect to Northwest Highway or if Phase Two lots would be accessed off of the proposed roadways that would minimize the access point along Northwest Highway section that will be constructed as part of the Belvoir subdivision. The conceptual lot layout does address, to some degree, each of the staff's concerns related to the initial submittal. First, the rezoning request does remain as R twenty without a pod overlay, so the requested zone district is not listed as an appropriate zone district within the twenty forty comprehensive plan. Next, the potential future of the two parcels to the south are better understood. The parcel to the southwest is located within Williamson County and is zoned MGA one. But the developer of Belvoir subdivision is planning to acquire this parcel and request annexation and rezoning in order to expand the Belvoir subdivision farther to the south and southwest. The other parcel, tax map twenty-one, parcel sixty-one point oh six, has been annexed into the city and is zoned R twenty pod for the Wynwood Park subdivision development. Finally, the conceptual lot layout does provide clarity on the proposed road network and specifically that the proposed forty-eight lots will be accessed off of new roadways and will not have direct access onto the proposed Northwest Highway. Some concerns that remain for staff in this area within Phase Two that are not programmed on the conceptual lot layout, although the conceptual lot layout is not part of the rezoning request, these unprogrammed areas provide the opportunity for a few lots to front along the proposed Northwest Highway. Additionally, there are some unprogrammed areas within Phase Two. There are some areas of steep topography which may limit the potential development of the full area within the Phase Two area, but that would not be fully understood until final design for the site. So, there is potential for additional lots within Phase Two beyond what is shown on the conceptual lot layout. The Board of Commissioners sent this rezoning request back to the Planning Commission in order to reconsider their unfavorable recommendation based on the additional information provided by the owner developer. If the Planning Commission wishes to provide a favorable recommendation or maintain the unfavorable recommendation, the conditions of approval included in Resolution PC twenty-one twenty-four would apply, which includes the following. The rezoning request, if Planning Commission provides a recommendation, would move forward and be placed on the Thursday, June twentieth, the Board of Commissioners' meeting agenda for consideration with the potential for the public hearing and second reading being held at the Thursday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four Board of Commissioners' meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Greer, do we have a motion on item twenty-one dash twenty-four?
Move for approval?
Second.
Here. Anderson, Schilling, do we have any representatives on the applicant? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, good evening, Nath McVeigh with T-Square Engineering.
So, I'll first start out just by saying, again, this is, this was a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. So, even though it was voted down in the last meeting, I believe this item essentially is being brought back up as an, almost as a new vote. So, we'll start with that conversation. Comments, questions from the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chair? Recently approved, Aiden Woods. Can you tell me, Mr. Greer, what that was approved as?
R twenty.
Is there a development that touches this development that is smaller than R twenty?
There is a R twenty pod that touches this development.
So, Bellhaven doesn't?
Bellhaven is adjacent to this development.
Okay, adjacent to the development is Bellhaven. One of the issues was the speed on the Northwest Highway that the developer has agreed to build as a connector with what the city and Bellhaven have proposed to build as our new Northwest Highway. So, with that connection, there are streams running through this property, and the state of Tennessee tells you how you can cross these streams. And what I understand is the stream at the point where it connects is where they want the road to cross because they don't want it crossing two separate sections of a stream. So, with that being said, this Northwest Highway that is being built for the city of Fairview to connect to our, our part and Bellhaven's part of Northwest Highway to, you know, complete our Northwest Highway project would put a curve in that road, and it would make it so that it's a twenty-five mile per hour road, not thirty-five. I think that was a question that I heard as a concern. So, with it being twenty-five, it's just like every other subdivision interior street in Fairview.
Mayor, if I may for just one second?
Yes.
Bree, can you go down two more slides? That slide, please. Thank you. This is the conceptual layout that was provided to our office as part of the new information.
If everyone can see the Northwest Highway that goes through, Ethan, if you have your pointer. I'm sorry, I have one. Rachel got it for me, and I had my car cleaned, and they took it out. So, I've got to, I've got to go through my things that they organized and unorganize them and get my pointer back. So, as you can see, this is the part of Northwest Highway that is being constructed by the developer. There's a portion to be determined that Bellhaven is going to construct. There's a portion that the city of Fairview, our citizens and their tax dollars will pay for. And then, this portion right here is, this developer will be constructing this and paying for this part as his contribution to the whole of Northwest Highway. With the streams that run through, there are only certain places that you can put, let me, oh, I'm so sorry. I'm pointing the wrong, y'all can't see where I'm pointing. Okay. That's Northwest Highway. These are the streams. I'm pointing at our screen, and I realize you can't see our screen. So, with that being constructed, the state of Tennessee prefers that the road cross only one time and not two different places in the stream. So, with that being said, the way that's being done, it, it controls how you do the lots. And so, that is the reason that it was asked to go from R forty to R twenty because with the construction of Northwest Highway, it, it's impeding on a lot of the places where lots were going to be. But we need that connector as a part of our Northwest Highway corridor. So, I think, in my opinion, we should consider how the lot design is and being determined somewhat by the streams and the road. We had a development, Reserves of Chester, that was considered in a similar manner. This is on conventional sewer, and I just feel like with the new information, there's no intent of any of the homes fronting on Northwest Highway at all. But with that new information, that I think we should reconsider how this plan is being laid out. Is there anything you'd like to?
Yeah, two things. So, I think, I would like to boil it down to kind of two things. Number one is the road, and I think there was a misconception because with others, the old staff, it was clear that no lots would infront Northwest Highway. That was supposed to be a fifty mile an hour collector road coming all the way through from north, from Highway ninety-six. So, there was never meant to be any roads. As you can tell from Phase One A and One B with Dice Lampley and Northwest Highway, both of those lots on the corners front Dice Lampley and Northwest, not the Collector Road. So, there was never an intent there to put driveways directly onto that Collector Road, and there still isn't. I mean, everything's going to be accessed off an internal road that's going to come off Northwest Highway. The second point is the zoning. And while the new residential medium neighborhood doesn't specifically say R twenty in the appropriate zoning, I think it's missed because if you go to the development characteristics here, conventional subdivisions, it says narrower range of lot sizes, two units per acre. That's a twenty thousand square foot lot. So, by saying you want a pod, I can drop down two lot zones and put an even smaller lot than twenty thousand square foot in a pod. But that's not what we want, that's not the intention here. The tendency is to do a twenty thousand square foot lot that matches really the legacy neighborhood characteristic, which is a more rural feel. So, I wanted to clear that up, that while it didn't explicitly say R twenty, the characteristics that are listed here kind of lead to you to the R twenty characteristic.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so, that's a good point. In our pod, that is, when we ask for, which is called a pod right now, when that's being asked for, it can be many different size of lots, and the lots can be smaller. But also, you know, when you've got these nice, like, this is our typical, what I see throughout Fairview and the feel for Fairview is these, you know, half acre to acre lots. Not all of these are half acre, some of them are larger, some of them are even acre lots. But, you know, you, it calls for like tot lots and different things like that. People who have these nice, large homes with, you know, typically, sometimes they'll put a pool behind them. They'll have, you know, play gems for their kids. They fence them so their dogs can run. You know, they're more interested in having that type situation on their own property. You're, you know, when you're looking at the smaller lots like the, you know, R fifteen, R ten, that's more of the feel for having common area that all the neighborhood can use because the houses are so close together. In this situation, this is like, you know, where I live, a Cowls Creek, Castleberry, it's half acre to acre lots. I just appreciate the fact that, you know, they're willing to work with us to construct their portion of the Northwest Highway, which is saving our taxpayers quite a bit of money. And they're paying attention to these lots not fronting on this main connector road.
Yes, so, the development that's to our southeast, Wynwood, that's an RS twenty pod, and it has a five thousand square foot rear-loaded product. I don't think that's what the board wants, is a five thousand square foot rear-loaded product, which would be allowed under an RS twenty pod. That's what we're asking for the straight zoning here.
Question from Mr. Greer. When did the updated information become available? Was that prior to the June sixth Board of Commissioners' meeting? Or was that following?
I was provided this information partially in a meeting on June third and then in a follow-up email on June fourth.
Thank you, sir. And was any of that information available for the Board of Commissioners' meeting recently?
The, within our meeting with the developer, the mayor was present during that, and so, there was knowledge of that meeting at the Board of Commissioners' meeting.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand if it's a recommendation that we provide to the Board of Commissioners? And so, I'm a little confused why it got kicked back.
Because of the new information that was discovered.
Okay, so, that was not available for the Board of Commissioners' meeting?
It was discovered between the last Planning Commission meeting and the Board of Commissioner meeting.
So, no, none of those updates were brought forward for the Board of Commissioners?
Well, we really didn't need, there wasn't really a need for it because the item was, it merely just said to, you know, send it back to the Planning Commission. For the Planning Commission to get this new information and decide for themselves about the new information. Because essentially, the board wasn't going to do anything until it went back to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission can review this new information, decide if they want to move it back forward to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Other comments? Mr. Calley?
When this property, when this piece of property came up a few years ago for annexation, it was R forty. And we were all happy because all the properties around there from the early two thousands were, you know, going to be very dense, and this was like a breath of fresh air. Now, they come back and they want to go R twenty. We know that the traffic from the other subdivisions in the area, including Aiden Woods, going to the high school and the middle school, is going to put a lot of stress on Dice Lampley, Old Cox, Northwest Highway. And if we put more homes in that area, it's just going to increase that problem. And that's why it was nine to nothing in the last meeting to just keep it R forty, okay? Because it seemed like a bait and switch, you know? Yeah, we're, you know, annex this at R forty, now we're going to go to R twenty down the road. And if, say they, this company falls apart or everything goes to heck in a handbasket, and somebody else comes back in five years, you don't know how many homes are going to put on. Now, now it's R twenty, everything could change again, just like other ones have changed in this town. So, you know, we've got plenty of dense operations out there, dense things coming in. And at the time, I even said, this is like a breath of fresh air. This is great. R forty is great, and they were all happy. Now, they're not so happy. It's just, it just doesn't seem right.
Just as a small correction, the vote was seven to zero. Just wanted to make that clear for the record, but...
But I also don't think we had the, all the information, and he did not, it wasn't recommended at the last meeting. That's why it was seven to zero.
Excuse me if I would, my name's Tony Cavender, and I'm hearing, you know, I'm hearing different things and chatter and whatnot about what is density in Fairview? I mean, I remember a time that R twenty was a, talking about the breath of fresh air. That was what was really, you know, what Fairview wanted to be. Then it goes up to R forty, and when we annex this in, we didn't go before the board because we didn't know what we were going to do with this property and how we was going to design it. So, when you automatically, you know, make petition for annexation, what does that automatically come in at? Comes in at R forty. We do a preliminary plan, but those things are subject to change. They're never, they're never ever like the plan shows because there's so much foliage on the trees. There's so, you know, we do our topos, and the topos are never right, you know, until the topo, you know, until the foliage leaves. I mean, there's so many things. I mean, we, we, at Otter Creek, we were planning on putting, I don't know, a hundred and eighty houses out there. I think we're going to wind up with maybe a hundred and forty. So, you know, so Fairview got, you know, it's more kudos for you because you got less houses, but we still built the road. Everything's built the same, and these things don't build themselves. They're financially a burden to build. And some of these things that we offered to do for the city, such as doing this passing road with Northwest, that's something we don't have to do. We don't have to do that. That was something I volunteered to do. So, if you want to leave at R forty, you don't expect us to build thirty-two houses for this hundred and fourteen acres that we got twenty-five across the street at Orangeire and expect us to fund your road because that's not going to happen.
Well, I disagree because the gentleman that was there when it was annexed said they were putting in one acre homes into that property. So, maybe everything's changed, but at that time, he said he was putting in one acre homes.
I think there were some things taken out of context with what he just said. That was a, that was no more than just a drawing, no more than just an architectural drawing. These things change because there's no way for us to know exactly how many houses we're going to get at any given time when we, when we buy a new piece of property. There's no, there's no telling because things change. It's financially impossible to do, put thirty some odd houses on acre lots. Number one, they're going to be over a million dollars. So, I mean, I'm hoping, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, that Jones Company are able to provide sales for, for, for the, you know, the comps as far as in Fairview, and I think they possibly can. But that's not really what I envisioned this place to be. Otter Creek is half acre, Richfield's half acre. I mean, we've got, they're beautiful developments, and I just, I'm blown away by having trouble bringing before board half acre lots and having this kind of pushback on getting this done, no matter what the preliminaries show, as far as what we showed. So, you're going to hold our development up against three, four hundred and eighty houses across the street in Aiden Woods that had a similar zoning, which was R twenty pod, and it got the R twenty, and you gave the R twenty zoning for that. So, I don't know, I guess the difference was it is, it's Castleberry, and it was an already R twenty zoning. But nevertheless, we're getting pushed back on that, and you're going to give us pushback over forty-eight houses? I just don't understand that. But if that's what you're, if that's what you choose to do, do so. But I disagree with you.
Apparently, though, what we're looking at is, this is a conceptual plan, though, correct?
It's a conceptual plan.
So, we don't have actual numbers?
When we tweak this, I don't even think no more than we could possibly get, I don't think it'd be no more than forty-eight to fifty-five. I mean, there's no way for us to, because there's only fifty-nine acres or so. And, you know, we got some topo, you see the, kind of the open space that we have, but that's a lot of land pushed up. I mean, I guess we could get some larger, you know, a few more R, maybe some R forty lots to get that up out of a critical lot situation. But, but, I mean, we're not asking for, I mean, I don't, I don't get it. We're just not asking for a hundred and fourteen acre tract. We're not asking, we got twenty-seven perimeter houses that are, that are, that are an acre or right at an acre, and we're just asking for the interior of this to be able to, to be able to build your road and be able to fund it. Because if we can't, we can't build it. I mean, you know, it's not fair for, I think there was some discrepancy with Bellhaven. I think what they offered and, and what we're going to spend on this road, and it's basically the same. They got four hundred and eighty houses, and we're going to have, I don't even know, you know, maybe seventy-seven houses in this total parcel? That ain't fair.
Mr. McDonald?
So, it sounds like we're having this discussion again because new information was brought forward. I'm having a hard time understanding what new information was brought forward outside of, it sounds like the road adjusted some and the speed limit changed. But I don't know how that correlates to justifying doubling the amount of homes on the property.
Well, we're not doubling, number one. I think we're pretty clear that with thirty-two R forty lots or somewhere in that neighborhood.
Conceptually, correct.
So, anyway, so, but the bottom line of it is, and I wasn't the one that, you know, we were just going over with the planner about the, you know, the situation with the road crossing being that we're going to have to, you know, we can't have the same radius which is going to dictate the forty-five mile an hour speed zone versus twenty-five. And so, with our situation, you're going to have to move the road over because you, you're not, the state's not going to allow us to inch it over just because we want to abide by our speed limit. They're going to make us go the lesser of the evil, and that's across one time, which is going to bring the radius down to twenty-five mile an hour. Hypothetically, I guess, going back compared to some of the other subdivision, that's now an interior road subdivision. We could put houses off that road.
Which this would be an interior road as well, correct?
It, well, it would be. It would be that we're, but we're also agreeing not to do that because it's going to be the new Northwest road, interior road going through. It's just going to have a, it's going to have a slowdown period instead of doing, you know, instead of doing forty-five, you're going to be, you know... know, instead of doing 45, you're going to be, you know, miles per hour through this section, it's going to be 25 mile an hour.
It, it's an interior road, right, to your development? I mean, without it, you're not accessing any of your...
Oh, I, I'm going to, I'm going to do it irregardless, and I won't build the road. I'll just come up through there and, and come in my place and I'll just build it the, the, the minimum that I can. And, and I'll give the city the, the right of way, which I've already done, and the city can, you know...
To go back to Mr. Cowley's point, I, I did go back and re-watch the, the first and second readings of the annexation and all, all the meetings pertaining to this conversation that has taken place in the past. And I think you would be extremely hard pressed to say that it was not intended to be what was originally designed for.
Other than that's, that's, that's going to be your call.
Without a doubt, it was not vague or, you know, we may change our plans in the future. It was very specific.
There's never a plan that I know of that will come for you that's going to be the exact same as proposed. It's, it's, it's never going to happen.
That's fair. I'm just simply saying that at the time in which this was originally presented, it did not, there was no implication that there would potentially be changes. It was very much, this is the vision for this area and this is what we hope to complete. I mean, that was, that was pretty evident.
So, Mr. Chair.
Mayor.
So Ethan, if, if Mr. Cavender, you know, if, if that road is not constructed through his development, how would Northwest Highway connect?
It would operate exactly how it does today.
So no, no improvement?
At this time, that would be correct.
So without this connector here, our Northwest Highway project would not connect?
The right of way would be dedicated to the city, and the city would fund this at a later date.
I'm, I'm, I'm thinking it's, I mean, it's pretty clear. I mean, math is simple here.
So Mr. Cavender, I was told that that's about $3 million.
Yes.
So that would be $3 million of taxpayer money that we would have to have to build this ourselves over, over 20 or 30 homes. We would be building, we would take $3 million of our taxpayers' money to build this road when it's being donated. And I, I just, I just can't agree with that.
I don't believe the citizens of Fairview would appreciate that kind of, for the, for the difference in the homes and the, and the, the density. It just, it just, to me, it don't make any sense, but it may make something different to you guys.
Well, and I'm just curious how it was so easily passed with Aiden Woods Phase 3, just so easily passed. R-20, no problem, pass, every unanimous.
And there's nothing touching Aiden Woods.
I mean, what's, what's the difference in my, in my mind?
The, the density in Aiden, Aiden Woods does not connect to no other property like, like, like Bellvoir does, as far as comparable. And you want to call it R-20 pod, those lots are 5,000 square foot lots. I don't even know how that happened, but that's what they are. I thought it was supposed to be half of the R-20, which is supposed to be 10,000 square foot lots, but they're, they're, they're 5,000.
So question on the direct connection to Northwest Highway. What assurance do we have as a city? Will that be put in writing that there will be no driveways connected to Northwest, or how can we, since it's a conceptual plan?
Well, that would be up to staff, I mean, let Ethan answer that.
The Planning Commission would have that opportunity at a development plan stage to make that as a condition of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Greer.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, but just to be clear, that the zoning cannot be conditioned on, on something else happening. The zoning stands alone. And I just wanted to maybe kind of redirect the conversation briefly. Everyone knows this is a recommendation to the BOC. The BOC is a legislative body and, and has very broad discretion on what they want to do. And they can take a lot of things into account. And if there's any rational basis for their decision, it's, it's generally going to be upheld. This is an administrative body, and this body has to apply the code that the BOC has put in place. And so the code 17107.4 gives you five things to consider. None of those things are higher or lower than the other. None of them are mutually exclusive. It just says, consider these factors. The first one is, is the amendment in agreement with the general plan, and I think there's a lot of discussion about that. There's another factor that says it's been determined that conditions affecting the area have changed to such an extent to warrant an amendment to the zoning plan. So there's, that can go multiple ways. None of those factors are exclusive. But I would just encourage the board to consider the factors that the BOC has put in the zoning ordinance for you to consider and, and take that into account for your recommendation.
Agreed, and thank you very much. So I would just ask to direct the Planning Commission to, let's stick to the facts, code discussion. It's not a personal decision, nor does it impacted by other opinions of other developments at this point. Mr. Page?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions, and I'll start with kind of relative to the road because I'm somewhat new, so I'm trying to get back to the history. And the staff might be the best people to answer these questions. The, the right of way for the new Northwest Highway, that was dedicated with the last plat that we approved, what, two months ago? Is that correct?
That is correct, but with a contingency, that any future plats could supersede that and therefore it could change.
But, but it's currently there, and that's when it was, that's when it was done. There was never, with the zoning, there was never a condition that that had to be done as, as part of the original zoning, correct?
Repeat that question.
Like, so when the, when this entire huge piece of property was owned R-40, there was no condition put on that, that the developer had to dedicate that right of way? So it was completely voluntary?
That is correct.
If, so let's say we decide to say no, and, and Mr. Cavender says, yeah, I can't afford to build that road. Feel free, you guys can if you want, to keep it the way it is. Obviously, the old Northwest Highway, there's no room to expand it. So our only choice would be to build the new road if we want to expand Northwest Highway. Is, is that a fair statement?
Yeah. Yes, we would, we would review the design of the realignment of Northwest Highway that would connect to the intersection of, well, I guess not an intersection, but that, that bottom right portion of Northwest Highway.
Yeah. And then obviously, the speed limit has an impact, but with the discussion that we had when the plat was done recently, you know, we changed the intersection kind of on the right side of the page right now to be a three-way stop. So even if you had a 45 mile an hour speed limit, you're going to end up with a three-way stop there anyway. So it's going to be a slower road. So that, that kind of comes into play. The, the other question, just so I can kind of thoroughly understand it, I think from what Mr. McDonald said and, and some other things, when this was brought in for rezoning, was there an annexation application and a zoning application, or was it just an annexation application and therefore it was designated R, R-40?
There was only an annexation application, and with that, if a zone district is not requested, it comes in as R-40.
Right. But it sounds like there was discussion potentially that, that R-40 was the intent.
That was the discussion that was had during the annexation of this property.
Okay. Last question is, this is a request for 52.9 acres. I want to make sure I understand exactly what's being rezoned. Is it only the part that's on this concept plan, or should we go back to the other?
Mr. Page, Bree, if you can go back one slide, it would be the shaded area that is on this, is the piece that would be rezoned.
Okay. So there are parts that'll be rezoned that aren't part of that concept planned as well?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments from the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mayor.
So if you see the white portion, what we've got is exterior lots that are nice acre lots moving into a more interior that are half acre lots. I don't know about all of our friends and neighbors in Fairview and people moving here, but in my opinion, I feel like we need price points that are different. I mean, I know that I couldn't go in and buy, build, buy a house on an acre lot with the current prices in Fairview. So what are we going to do? We have all these acre lots, and nobody can afford to build a million and a half dollar home. But on the half acre lots, the house price comes down below the million dollar price point, and it's more affordable. So do we want lots sitting, not being able to be purchased? Or do we want, what the feel for Fairview I feel is, all these nice developments that have half acre lots in a more affordable setting?
Well, you know, obviously, we've done the concept basically off of, off of Otter Creek. Otter Creek is the same way. It's got acre lots that, that go up and, and join other fronting properties off of Old Nashville, and we, we give it the same feel as that. I mean, and we mentioned there was MGA 1, so it's one acre lots next, you know, that, that, that joins this property or either that or across the street. And, and that, you know, generally, that property, that property will be annexed in eventually, at some point in time. And, and it's, it's certainly not the intent to have 100, you know, have 100 or 80 one acre lots in this, this area. And I, and I'm going to tell you something. And I got my personal home place where I was born and raised, joins the farm across the street. You know, so, I mean, I, it's not like I don't have, I mean, I, I have a little bit in this as well. And, and my family being from Fairview and have been, going about all the way back to Pasadena, I've been here, my bloodline's a long time here. So I want the best for Fairview. And, and I, you know, I think what we've proposed is, is, is really pretty. I mean, the, the houses, and we have a builder here in the, in the, in the audience here that's, that's built in Otter Creek, does a great job. I mean, the, the kind of people that we've, that we've attracted here is, I mean, they're, they're going to build this, I mean, they're building beautiful homes in here. And it's, I mean, and they, and they're selling, you know, they're selling. But I'm, I'm just afraid we get a whole and tired development, you know, worth of these type of, you know, these type of priced houses, it may be an issue going forward. But, but that's up, just like I said, it's up to you guys what, what you plan on doing with this. But I think we've proposed a very fair deal here. And, and the dollar for dollar, for what we're going to contribute to the city, we're not asking for, I don't, I just don't, I'm not, I, I don't feel like I need to apologize for what we're, what we're offering to do. We've already give you $250,000 worth of road width and, and dedicate it. Nobody made us do it. We done it because we wanted to.
My last question for clarification, though, there is, there's really nothing in writing, though, that says this development will build this portion of Northwest Highway, correct?
There's...
That's just, just conceptual only. It's not tied to the zoning. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. And, and, and there was nothing at the time than when we give you the property, you know, we, that we paid for, you know, we donated, nobody, there was no agreement there. We just did it.
Right. But just, just wanted to make that perfectly clear. There, there's no assurance that this $3 million does not fall on the burden of the taxpayer one way or the other. So...
Yes, sir. And, and I'm, I'm here to tell you that it would not, if we, if we have the R-20 zoning and, you know, and affordability, that's, that, we have lots that's going to pay for this road. As it is, it's, it's nothing, I mean, zero, zero, zero.
Understood. Just wanted to make sure we get that clear.
Here, if I may. First off, the whole word personal is being thrown around a lot. Mr. Cavender, there's nothing personal here. I don't know if that's, who's that's directed at. I just wanted to clear things up. I've voted in your favor for projects of yours in the past on other things. I think there's projects that you are currently working on that I'm a big fan of. In fact, I'm trying to figure out how to move into one of them. There's nothing personal here. What, what might come off as personal is because we all care about what we do up here. And when we tell, for me, not everyone on this board is an elected official, but I am. I have talked to many people in this town that have said, hey, what's going on in that Northwest corridor area over the years, ever since your, your project first came in front of us? And you know what I've told every single one of them? There's going to be beautiful one acre lots over there. You're going to have, coming off the road, you're going to have a subdivision that everyone's a big fan of. It's high density. As we move out, you get into your half acre lots, also your projects across the street. Then you get into one acre county lots, and then your Bell, Bell, Bellvoir starts back up, and you wanted to go with one acre going from high density, half acre, one acre, out into farmland. Beautiful idea, in my opinion. I don't, I disagree with anything about that. I love that idea. However, what I don't love is now having to go back and talk to every single one of those people that I've looked in the eye and said, this is what's coming over here, to now all of a sudden it's changed. And there's a couple of people in this town, I won't invoke their names, but they have, they're very familiar with this room, and pretty much everybody in it. And if we rezon this to do that, we are basically doing exactly what they said we were going to do. I mean, they called the shot about a year and a half, two years ago. And that is mind boggling, in my opinion. I think most of us can connect the dots to what I'm talking about, but it's, we, we're, we're backtracking on, and promises that I've made. And it's, it's nothing personal. It's just conversations I've had with too many people where I can say, oh, I'm, I'm now in favor of this. So for, for me personally, on a personal level, nothing against you, sir, or anything that you do in this town. I appreciate every, all of it. It is what I have told the people that I represent in this town, and I'm not going back on that.
Well, I understand that and respect that. It's, it's just that we have a lot more in this community than two or three people. There's a lot of voices and...
I talk to quite a few more than two or three, but I appreciate it.
Well, I understand that. But there's a lot of people, and $3 million worth of taxpayers' monies is, would get, should get their attention.
To that point, too. So pick any subdivision that's going on right now. Aiden Woods, Castleberry, any development, pre-existing, current, being built, whatever. Guarantee you, every single one of them has a road going from an existing Fairview road into their new development, connecting to an existing Fairview road. That is not us to say, thank you for building us a new road. It's a new road, sir. That's what it is. It's a road for you to access this property so you can build homes on it.
Well, it will be accessed irregardless.
But that's what it is.
But it won't be necessarily built the way it's designed right here.
We can look at it. There's two ways, you know, there's two sides of every coin. And yes, you could make an argument for both sides, but at the end of the day, that is what it is.
Yeah, I'm not making an argument. I'm stating the fact.
It's an interior road that makes, gives you access to this lot.
I understand that.
Can I ask, though, of all those people you're talking to, are they ready to buy a million dollar house? Because I don't know a lot of people here in Fairview that can build a million dollar house. Or is it about the property that's across? Because is that the 300 house property right there?
Chair, I'm going to respond to you, but I, I'm pretty sure I just laid out my opinion. I'm not going to get back and forth. I don't, I'm not finding buyers for these land, for these properties. I don't know. That's for him to worry about. He's going to be building them. Usually they'll build something unless you're going to sell it. So it's not, that's not my problem.
No, I know that, but there's no million dollar properties around here.
Well, and Mr. McDonald is, I mean, I, I mean, obviously, he's a real estate agent. He would probably know this. I mean, he's...
I am not a real estate agent, sir.
Anyways, but, I mean, I agree, I mean, I totally agree. And I think the, the, the portion of this is, is about getting down to what it says to the city. And if we're talking to 30, 30 some odd different houses, you know, it's a difference between, between, that's a, that's $100,000 a house to make up this road. I don't see where it, it becomes a problem on half acre lots. Now, you, you know, you perfectly have the right to vote this down, and, and I won't bring it back. I'll, I'll leave out of here with a smile on my face. And it's just, it just, I've done the best I could. I just don't agree with it. I, I agree that R-20 lots make sense for this situation. And none of that, it doesn't matter when you see my face in here and I bring it, I bring a deal before you. It's going to change. I, it's never going to stay the same. Never. Because we do the best we can. We pay the engineers. The engineers design it the best they can. But when we, when we, when we get in and, and we get rid of the foliage, we may pick up a, we may pick up a spring somewhere that, that wasn't, that didn't get noted before. So it totally changes things. So everything changes. I, I can't be held because I said we have an acre lot subdivision, and, and because that was never the intent. It can be argued that, I said that, or it can be argued that we presented it that way. But that's not the point. That's not, that's not what we intend to do at the, at the end of the project. And, and as far as this particular piece of property, I think we all know and have seen, it was a very touchy situation to bring into the city because so many people live around it. They watch the deer, they watch the, the coyotes, and they watch the rabbits and things. And I, and I get it. I live right around, I was raised right around the corner. But it also had a for sale sign in it. And it was for sale. And the best way to stop development is by it. And that will stop me from being, I wouldn't even be here. I'll go, you know, I'll go somewhere else where it's, it's desired. Spring Hill, Nolansville, Tompkins Station. I don't want to argue, and, and I don't want to, I feel like, you know, you got to beat the bush down here to get stuff approved sometimes. And it leaves a really bad taste in your mouth with other developers, especially when we're spending millions and millions of dollars in here trying to, to better the city. I think everything we've done, I don't have anything here I've done in Fairview that I'm ashamed of. That's number one. I built a great, great development with always the, the best of intentions. So I think the, the argument I'm hearing is just that we, we... So I think the, the argument I'm hearing is just that we, we, when we brought it in, we brought it in at, you know, acre lots. And I would like to see all acre lots, but it just don't make sense in this particular, I mean, no, nowhere. I think if you do a perimeter around it and it's acre and you have the interior R20, I just, I just have never seen that we have a problem with R20. Ever. And that, but I'm seeing it now.
Mr. Cavender, thank you for your comments, thoughts. Do we have any substantiated?
Mr. Chairman, I just have two more, two more questions. So with the part that's being rezoned, the concept plan, there's areas that weren't included. Is there a reason you guys didn't put those on the concept plan? You know, and, and I'm curious if you, I know we're not voting on the concept plan, but I'm curious as to why those were left out. My concern, the reason, the kind of leading into that question is it looks like you guys put some roads in. So there's some areas behind the lots that, between the lots and the stream that would also be R20. I don't know how you'd plan those. And like, that makes me concerned that we're gonna see another application asking for the rest of that white area to be R40 some, or R20 sometime in the future. Because I'm not sure how you fill in the gap between the current concept plan and some of those areas. So was there a reason you left certain areas out of the concept plan that are currently being rezoned?
I would just like to speak to the white area that is outside of that is plotted as Belvoir Phase 1A and Belvoir Phase 1B. And those are all greater than 40,000 square foot lots.
Even, even the part essentially west of the new Northwest Highway? So.
Even, that's correct, that was.
That's correct, that's Belvoir Phase 1B.
And it's plotted down to the creek line.
Yeah, okay, so it's plotted to the creek line.
Yes, sir.
So that, I mean theoretically, you could come in and change it even after the plat, but that's already been plotted. It's already been plotted with 40,000 square foot lots, R40, okay. But, so is there a reason you kind of left between the stream and the concept plan unplanned?
If you look at the topo, and now we gotta talk last meeting about critical lots, that kicks in in this case. Because you're gonna have some, you know, 25, 30 foot drops going down to that stream. It's just not really feasible right now.
So it's gonna be almost impossible to develop those areas that aren't shown on the concept plan currently that are, but are included in this R20 zoning?
Very, very difficult, very costly. So yes, while it's being rezoned, the creek line's the simple rezoning line right there.
Yeah.
But, you know, feasibility of building it, we're just kind of keeping on the highest spot right there. And then the interior there, that's basically covers everything behind those existing R40 lots on the existing Northwest Highway.
What we may do on these, we may even attach those, I don't, we, we run, you know, and we, we, we have these HOAs and we try to keep the costs down for the, for the families that's gonna live here. So we may even come back in and actually make those lots even bigger and connect them to, because there's no use in us having that open space on our R20. Just give it to the homeowner and just, and just cut it that way.
And then on the concept plan, do you have a rough feel for what the average lot size was? Obviously, there are all different sizes based on the concept plan.
Minimums are 20,000. I think that averaged out at 23,800 roughly. There's some of them in the corner are fairly large. So I'd say probably about 23, 24,000 was the average on those.
Thank you.
Any further comments, questions? As a reminder, this is a recommendation to the next Board of Commissioners hearing. They all have the ability to make the final decision. Call for the vote, please.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Nay.
Mr. Calley?
Nay.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Motion carries five to two. Moving on to new business, first item. PC Resolution, PC 22 dash 24, rezoning of 7103 Wiley Circle. 4.52 acres, MAP 42H, Group C Parcel 8. Current zoning is C1, requested zoning CMU. Property owner Wiley Circle Investment. Can we entertain a motion on item number one? Motion to review, discuss item number one, new business?
Second.
Was there, was there a first?
Sorry. I make a motion to review.
We have a second.
Point of order, there's a motion to review on the table, so we'll have to motion to approve or disapprove.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Schulus Anderson. Mr. Greer, can you read your report, please?
Mr. Adam Ellsworth with Hickory Capital Group has submitted on behalf of Wiley Circle Investment, a request to rezone the entire 4.52 acre parcel located at 102 Wiley Circle. The property is currently zoned C1 and the requested zone district is CMU Commercial Mixed Use. The properties to the east are zoned Commercial General. Properties to the south and west are zoned RS40 Single Family Residential. And the properties to the north are zoned RS40 Single Family Residential and R21 and 2 Family Residential. The properties to the east contain a multitude of commercial and office uses. The properties to the north and south contain a single family detached, contain single family detached residences. And the property to the west is currently vacant. The property requested for rezoning currently contains a church and a parsonage related to the church. The Fairview Forward 2040 Comp Plan designated this property as Commercial Center. The Commercial Center notes the appropriate land use as restaurant, retail, office, light industrial, multifamily as part of a mixed use development and civic institutional. The Commercial Center classification lists two zone districts as appropriate zoning and those zone districts are CC and OPS districts with changes to achieve the intent of the policy. The appropriate zonings of CC and OPS at this time of the adoption of the 2040 Plan did not permit the self-storage land use. The CC Commercial Community District and OPS Office Professional Services District zone districts are no longer included within the Fairview zoning ordinance. The Commercial Center classification does list light industrial as inappropriate land use, which could potentially be more intensive than the proposed self-storage land use. Also, under development character, the Commercial Center classifications list six broad characteristics that would define, define development within this classification. These characteristics include being centered around key intersections, buildings set back from corridor, limited parking in front of building along the corridor, small to medium footprint, standalone or inline commercial office buildings, emphasis on walkability and vehicular connectivity between buildings and developments and buildings up to three stories. The property is near the intersection of Fairview Boulevard, Highway 100 and Wiley Circle along with many other Commercial Center classified properties. Due to steep topography, floodplain, a sewage disposal area and a 100 foot TVA easement along the portion of the property fronting along Fairview Boulevard, any development proposed on the property will be set back approximately 260 feet from Fairview Boulevard. The self-service storage land use does not generate a lot of traffic and requires little parking compared to other commercial uses. Couple that with the steep topography and floodplain along Fairview Boulevard, the parking areas will have minimal visual impact along the corridor. The proposed building is two stories in height. And given the topography of the site, both the first and second story will be accessible from ground level. The topography will assist in minimizing the visual impact of the two-story building along Wiley Circle. The two development characteristics that the concept plan does not fully satisfy is the building being a medium-sized footprint and connectivity between other developments. The topographic challenges and existing development pattern of the commercial properties to the east make it very difficult to provide a pedestrian vehicular connection to this existing commercial land use. Finally, in an effort to minimize the vertical impact of the building, the building has a larger footprint within the parcel. Given that the concept plan presented by the applicant indicates nearly all of the development characteristics listed within the Commercial Center classification will be satisfied. There are commercial uses located directly east of the subject property and the requested CMU zone district permits medium, the land uses noted as appropriate within the Commercial Center classification. Staff recommends the Planning Commission provide a favorable recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for the rezoning request. The reason for the proposed rezoning that was given was the applicant provided. We are applying for a zoning change within the commercial designation in order to build a bi-level indoor climate-controlled self-storage facility. The total gross square footage is approximately 75,000 square feet across two stories. The planned project is a bi-level building, meaning that given the grade of, of the topography, both the first and second floors will be at grade level. The main entrance will be via Fairview Boulevard. Our staff recommendation again is Planning Commission provide a favorable recommendation to the board with a condition, the rezoning requests will be placed on the Thursday, July 11th Board of Commissioners meeting for consideration with the potential for the public hearing and second reading held at the Thursday, August 1st, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Do we have any representatives of the applicant this evening? Sir, if you could please just state your name and address for the record.
Hickory Capital Group.
Alan Ellsworth, is that right?
Adam Ellsworth.
Adam, thank you, sir.
Pardon me, is that better?
Yes, sir. Comments, questions from the Planning Commission?
Is there any indication of what will be going in here yet?
As far as what they can store?
Sure.
The, the customers?
Sure, is it a, like, for commercial use or for just people in general wanting a storage facility?
The vast majority of the customer base is usually residential use. So it's household items, furniture, people moving in and out of Fairview. And then there's a small portion of most self-storage facilities that is a commercial use in the sense that a retailer will have extra inventory, they'll rent a storage unit. Medical rep will keep their, their stock in there, but for the most part, it's just residential items.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Mr. McDonald.
I have a, I think there's probably more for staff. I know that site is question, I mean, there's a lot of interesting characteristics to it, but there's a lot of limitations to it, right? With where it sits, the access off of 100, the access off of Wiley Circle. So is there, is there any thought of, I guess, limitations on what that site offers as to what even could be used in that site? Is storage unit an ideal fit for it due to its difficulty in access points and all of that? I, your traffic, I'm guessing, is relatively low as most storage unit facilities would be as far as like daily trips and stuff, right?
Correct. I would love to tell you that it's a high-traffic use that'd be good for us, but it's, it's pretty low comparatively speaking.
And then part two of that question, and after you have a chance to answer it, would be, is there any improvements that would be required to be made to the access point to that property? If you was to move forward? I know that's rezoning, I'm just curious.
At this point, this is a rezoning, we would have to address that at a, at a site plan conversation.
But if, if the site is difficult to suit what it is being rezoned for, I think it's a worthy question to ask in whether or not the accessibility is an issue for what they're requesting.
Mr. McDonald, I would direct that question towards the applicant. They're probably more familiar with existing conditions and then they can answer the, the challenges they foresee and whether, you know, what their opinion is on it. Because as, as a staff, we can't, I don't think we can answer that question with, with the rezoning.
Suits our purposes.
Yeah.
But to expand on that, we have relatively small footprints. So this might be more detailed response than what you're looking for. But modern self-storage is typically internal and climate-controlled. The first and second generation, it's a bit of a sea of garage doors. You don't really build that as much anymore. About two acres, give or take, is, is buildable, given easements and the topography. And so for what we're looking to do, have an internal climate-controlled facility, the site works. And the access point works well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mayor Anderson.
What is the size you're thinking about? Oh, let me back up. Are you looking at doing an ingress egress off of Highway 100?
Yes, that'd be the main access point.
There currently is a ingress egress off of Highway 100 to this property.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any road improvements that would need to be done?
It's a very narrow, very narrow access point.
That would, they would likely widen their access point to be able to accommodate some of their traffic that they would see coming into a storage facility. If there were road improvements that were warranted by T-Dot, those would be required to be improved.
And how about it being two levels, correct?
Correct, bi-level, as it, we're building into the hill.
Say, I'm sorry, say that again.
We would build into the hill. If you look at it from Highway 100, you'd see two stories. If you look at it from the back, you see one story. So both levels are accessed at grade level.
And there would be no issue with fire safety?
No.
Being two levels?
No, we're, we're required to obviously build the proper amount of exits. The whole thing is gonna be sprinkled, so there shouldn't be any issues at all.
How many square feet are you looking at?
Seventy-five gross over both stories. That's altogether, not on each.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. So my focus is on the zoning, but I'm gonna ask some technical questions to kind of support what I'm trying to do. One of my concerns is always giving up good commercial land on our commercial corridor that could be used for retail and other such. In this case, your building is gonna sit behind that easement, correct?
Correct.
And the, currently, that sewage disposal system that, that's on the front of that property, is that serving the church now and would you be using that or are you connected to public sewer in the future?
I don't know the answer to that.
Do you guys, does staff know the answer to that?
That church is an abandoned building. I do not know that answer at this point, if it's serving it or not.
And the only reason I ask is if that sewage disposal system is, is something that's not needed, you know, you could have some retail up front at some point. And that's, you know, again, I hate to give it up, but I also look at that parcel and I look at the survey and there's significant concerns. It looks like DOT also has a drainage easement across that. So, you know, when I look at the zoning and the future land use plan, and, and I know those zones don't exist anymore, but the zones that were discussed in the future land use plan didn't include self-storage specifically. And there were zones that did. So that, that has some concern, but at the same time, this is an incredibly challenging piece of property to put retail on. So I'm a little bit torn on that with, with those two things. That's why I was asking those questions. Thanks. Well, will, will there also be access on from the back of the property as well? Or will all the access be off of Highway 100?
So we, we discussed that briefly. From our point of view, we don't care.
Yeah.
If, if, if we are required to put, and I think there's actually a gate, a gate that's locked there right now or an arm that comes down. If we're required to have access off to Wiley, we will. But from our point of view.
Doesn't matter.
Usually don't do that because we don't want to annoy our neighbors. And if people are coming in with trucks, with, you know, grandma's couch hanging out of the back, you know, they usually just want to come in and out of the.
Yeah.
The main drag.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You know, it's interesting, when I first looked up permitted uses, that there's quite a few on here. What caught my eye initially, which I don't, I'll just tell you, I don't think it's gonna be an issue with this law. But Commercial Mixed Use Districts, it says, often tend to generate relatively large volumes of heavy vehicular traffic, which can be detrimental to residential environments. And we do back up to some residential on the backside, but given the constraints of this particular property, I personally don't think we would be confining ourselves in the future if we were to rezone this to CMU. The lot's restrictive of itself. So I just don't see how that could be, create a problem for us in the future with something that would impose a traffic concern as well as it only, you know, it, it borders and touches a few things and it's pretty much already on Fairview. So just kind of went through a little bit of a mind map there, but I'm not certain that this particular property would impose those kind of concerns.
I would just like to note that prior to a Commercial General going, being changed and now becoming C1 through seven, self-storage was allowed within Commercial General. Once it became C1 through seven, at some point, someone forgot to put self-storage in there as one of the items. And so the only available zone district that allows self-storage units is Commercial Mixed Use. And that's why the applicant is here for Commercial Mixed Use.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Thank you, Mr. Greer.
Just as a follow-up to that, it's allowed in some industrial zones too, right? But obviously, we don't want to zone this to an industrial use.
That's correct.
Right.
Further thoughts, comments, questions? Ms. Jones, please call the vote. Thank you, sir.
Chairman, if I may, just to.
Oh, yes.
Clean up the record.
Yes.
We get a motion to approve the item.
That's correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Pape Anderson. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Pape.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling.
Aye.
Mr. Magner.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. New business, new business item number two, PC Resolution, PC twenty-three dash twenty-four, Residential Development Plan, City Center Phase Two, thirty-four point nine acres, MAP forty-two, Parcels one seventy-seven. Current zoning, MSMU. Property owner, McDowen, McGowan Family LP. Can I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve PC twenty-three twenty-four.
We have a second.
Second.
Calley Shulist.
Mr. Greer, would you please read your report?
City Center Phase Two is a residential development plan submitted to our city. Mr. Ryan Lovelace submitted the residential development plan for Phase Two of City Center Development. City Center is zoned Main Street mixed-use. It is a pod, contains a total of two-hundred-and-fifty-one residential units. The residential units consist of three different unit types, which are multifamily, townhomes, and single-family detached. Phase Two encompasses thirty-four point nine acres with seven point eight-eight acres in both public and private rights-of-way and total open space of four point five-five acres. Three point five-six of that is active with point nine-eight as passive open space. Phase Two will extend two public rights-of-ways that are being created in Phase One of the City Center Development, as well as create six additional public rights-of-ways and five new private alley right-of-ways. The property is located on FEMA Firm Panel four-one-eight-seven, C-zero-one-three-five-F, and a portion of Phase Two is located within a flood hazard area. Several of you were on, on the planning commission at the time that the master development plan came through. They have an approved master development plan that was approved on July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and contains all the information related to both Phase One and Phase Two of the development. On the screen in front of you would be the plan that you, you saw and, and looked at and liked, and that was what was approved. That is their controlling document. They have several different items in here. This is the illustrated plan. The next sheet is the regulatory plan, and then you will have their subsequent development plan. Tonight, we are asking you all to determine if their residential development plan is in substantial compliance with their approved master development plan. We've been through this several times over the last six or eight months, but just a reminder, site development plans or subdivision plots shall be deemed in substantial compliance with the master development plan and other controlling factors as outlined in the approved application for the planned overlay district provided modifications by the applicant do not involve any of the changes outlined below. Violate any provisions of this article unless specifically noted on the previously approved controlling documents of the planned overlay district, reduce the minimum lot sizes, minimum building setbacks, or minimum lot widths, involve a reduction of more than five percent of the area shown on the master development plan as reserved for open space, increase the total square footage of floor area proposed in the master development plan for non-residential use by more than two percent, increase the overall density, nor an increase in the density of any specific phase of the development, changes to roadway alignments or lot layouts that significantly deviate from the approved master development plan, include any land use that is outside of the boundaries of the approved planned overlay district, and involve any land use not specified in the approved controlling documents. In our staff report, we walk through each standard that is laid out in our zoning ordinance in Article ten, two oh three point five, determination of substantial compliance. And with each of those, we gave our staff recommendation for our determination of compliance within each. Standard one, does this violate any provisions of this article unless specifically noted on the previously approved controlling documents? We felt that this was satisfied. Standard two, does it reduce minimum lot sizes, minimum building setbacks, or minimum lot widths? Our determination of compliance in this matter, the submitted residential development plan notes the use of type-three residential structures within the development. However, the submitted architectural elevations for the type-three structures do not match the sample images within the approved master development plan. The proposed type-three structure types have a lot size of six-hundred-and-seventy square feet or less. The smallest lot approved within the master development plan is eight-hundred square feet. Staff's determination is that standard two has not been satisfied. Standard three is involve a reduction of more than five percent of the area shown on the master plan as reserved for open space. The submitted residential development plan satisfies that condition. Standard four increases the total square footage of floor area proposed in the master development plan for non-residential use by more than two percent. The residential development plan contains zero square footage of non-residential land use, and so did the approved master plan for Phase Two. Standard five, increase in the overall density or an increase in the density of any specific phase of the development. The submitted residential development plan does not propose an increase in density for Phase Two. In fact, the density in Phase Two has been lessened through the reduction in total number of units in Phase Two from three eighteen to two-hundred-and-fifty-one. Therefore, standard five is satisfied. Standard six, changes to roadway alignments or lot layouts that significantly deviate. Submitted residential development plan maintains the overall roadway alignments with only minor changes, such as adding on street parking along an alleyway and adding addition, additional alleyways to increase connectivity within the development. All roadway connections to City Center Phase One and Bowie Meadows to the west and Stub Streets for future connections to the north are maintained in the residential development plan. Therefore, standard six is satisfied. Standard seven, include any land area that is outside the boundaries of the approved planned overlay. They do not include any land area outside of their approved planned overlay. Standard seven is satisfied. Standard eight, involve any land use not specified in the approved controlling documents. Our determination of compliance for standard eight, the submitted residential development plan indicates that Phase Two will include three residence structure types. Those types were defined in the master development plan as type-three multifamily, type-four park-under-townhome, and type-eight, single-family front access. The residential development plan shows the type-four and type-eight residences, types as proposed and defined within the master development plan. The type-three residential structure type as shown on the residential development plan does not match the description for multifamily as approved within the master development plan. The type-three structures presented with this residential development plan are more closely related to type-five courtyard-townhome type within the master development plan. Staff's determination is that standard eight has not been satisfied. Based on the above-stated information related to Section ten, two oh three point five, staff is in the opinion, the residential development plan for Phase Two of the City Center project is not in substantial compliance with the approved master development plan for the City Center project due to the new residential structure type labeled as type-three multifamily, because that does not match the approved type-three residential structure type found in the approved master development plan. Related to this new residential structure type, these type-three structure types are located on lots less than six-hundred-and-seventy square feet, which is less than any approved lot size within the approved master development plan. Therefore, it is staff's opinion that amendments need to be submitted to the City Center Master Development Plan to include the new residential structure type and lot sizes. The amended master development plan will need to be reviewed by both the planning commission and the Board of Commissioners. If the amendments are approved, then the residential development plan can be considered by the planning commission. The residential plan can be considered once amended, and once an amended master development plan is submitted and approved by the Board of Commissioners that address substantial compliance standards two and eight found in Section ten dash two oh three point five of the Fairview zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Do we have representatives from the applicant this evening? If you will just state your name and address, please.
Ryan Lovelace, CSTG, and I'm happy, Chairman, to say a few things before y'all get started.
If you will, please, and if you could start by helping, because I know you're going to hear several questions tonight. Why the first five sheets represent one item, and then starting with page sheet six, really appears like a different set, if you can also clarify that.
Sure. And, and before we could start with that, Ethan, I think you were going to explain a few things on those items. I think we have resolved some of those items that we weren't in compliance with very easily. So I'll, if you don't mind, Ethan finishes.
Bree, if you can go to the next slide, please. Mayor, since you have the pointer, the light purple on the top right, right there, that piece calls for type-two, three, four, or nine, which is, I don't know, community facilities, park-under-townhomes, multifamily, or type-two is live-work units. If you can go to the next slide, Bree. Within that same area that is shown, they have street-parked townhomes. I believe the applicant is prepared to alter their plan to come into what our office would believe, would be substantially compliant if they put park-under-townhomes there. That was a option within their regulatory plan. That was the last slide in their approved master development plan.
Just for clarification, you mean as a condition of approval, or is that being, that's been?
We are respectfully requesting that, make that a condition of the approval tonight. Ethan and I talked this morning about this subject. It's easily, as you see in our plan, we have park-under-townhomes on a majority of this property. The upper-right corner is what we thought was multifamily, but we understand it's not. Those are parking lot townhomes, so we're simply going to have drive-under townhomes in the upper-right corner.
And just to help us set up for that conversation, could you please help state, as the applicant, how you would like that to be worded as your conditional of approval if it's, if it's accepted? So how would you like to word that for the, the record?
What, is that a two, three, four, seven, or nine? I guess probably just specifying which number that would be.
I believe.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Sir.
I might suggest that our planning staff say what it is they would find in substantial compliance and then allow the applicant to adopt that.
Sure, okay.
Perfect.
Does that make sense, Ethan?
Bree, if you can go back one slide to the regulatory plan. We would propose that the language shall say, "All proposed type-three units shall be changed to type-four park-under-townhomes."
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Mr. Lovelace, please feel free to continue with your original presentation.
If I may, could I have the pointer real quick? Could I? Mayor? Again, Ryan Lovelace, CSTG. If we can go a couple more slides, so what you, what you're seeing here in these first few slides, first few pages, is the original plan. We were asked to put that as part of our schedule, so you can see what was approved a couple of years ago, just so you guys see the context of it. And then when you get into the plan that was up there before, which is our plan, that's what we are intending to build. So if we, we go to page four, five, whatever it might be, Maria, and the next one, there you go. So in this plan, we have townhomes through here, we have single-family on the backside, which is Bowie Meadows over here, and then amenity center, pool, pool house in the center. Of course, this is the part that you see next to us here to the north, that's just now under construction. So like, like staff said, we're, we, we feel we are in substantial compliance with the original approvals. This is a great project, great product that we're about to build. So really, just here to answer any questions you guys might have, and we, I know this is the first time we've been in front of you, but we've been working on this for months to get to this point. We deferred last month just to work out a few more comments with staff. So we're very appreciative of staff working with us, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. Questions from the planning commission?
Mr. Chairman, the one thing I would say on this is, I think staff did a good job of outlining all the different components for substantial compliance. The one thing I struggle with is item six, the, you know, that this is, to say this is not a significant deviation from the approved roadways and lot layouts, I just don't, I can't see that. Not necessarily against the plan, but it is, it is a significant deviation. The roads are generally consistent, but the lot layouts are drastically different, and there's no way to avoid that when you go from a multifamily product to a townhome product. For that reason, I think it should be brought back as a modification to the master plan to make sure we get what we want. You know, the, the original plan had a lot more neighborhood-ish stuff mixed in and parks and things like that, and now this is a pretty straightforward residential layout. So that, that's some, that's just something that I, I believe, six, item, standard six is not met relative to substantial compliance. Ironically, we were talking earlier about density. This is the area you do want density, and I don't know if there's a specific reason why you guys went from multifamily in some of this to the townhomes, if you guys just feel like that's not the right product right now. I mean, obviously, it's less dense. You know, this is an area where we certainly want walkable density, so.
I'm Dave McGowan, Representative McGowan family, and we were originally applicants on this, and the market has changed significantly over the last couple of years. We planned to have quite a few rentals in this particular community, and if you look at the current market conditions, rentals have over, been oversupplied. And studying the market with Lennar, which we've done over the last year, we looked at what the market is really wanting out here. One of the things is attainability, we call it. It's not necessarily affordable, it's the attainability. So the families moving into Williamson County are looking for homes that they can buy at attainable prices. And so these particular townhomes right here are very similar to what we build in other communities right now, very high demand for those townhomes. And so that's what we're doing here, when we actually went down in the density instead of up in the density. At the same time, if you know about T and D communities, traditional neighborhood development communities, we do these throughout middle Tennessee right now. Usually, you start with a commercial component and, at the very front, and then you switch to another density in the back, and as you go further back into Bowie Meadows, you can see we changed the product all the way through. And again, we worked with Lennar on this particular plan. In addition to that, instead of just having one, two little open spots, we actually put a amenity center in the middle of the community that the community will be able to use, which includes pool, parks, and things of that nature. At the same time, we also still have the three trailheads that go into Bowie Meadows as well. And so it is a different plan, and we reduce, don't have condominiums going in there in this phase. We do have it in the front phase, but this back phase is mainly single-family attached and detached homes. And there's a book called Miss, The Missing in Middle, and it pretty well shows the same identical concept of how you start with a commercial in the front, and as you go in the back of the community, you change the density and bring it up to different sizes. So we hope that you see the substantial compliance with the overall design that was done.
If, if I could address standard six, you had a, a question about that or a comment. I think we feel like staff feels is that we feel. I think we feel like staff feels is that we feel we're in substantial compliance with the road layouts because we are still having the same east-west roadways tying from Bowie Meadows over to the commercial port components of phase one, as well as the connections to the north and zero connections, obviously, to the parks. So there's always some modifications as you get to this step based on topo or environmental factors, or whatever it might be, or product. So internal components changing is a very common process as we move through. So we feel like we're in substantial compliance. I think staff does, too.
And you're fair to make that comment, but it's not just road alignments, it's lot layouts as well, and this is that's significant deviation. If you overlaid the two, it would significantly look different, in my opinion, but everybody's got their own opinion, so thank you.
I was just going to quickly see if you could comment on, or it doesn't look like it, but in the previous one, there, in my opinion, is significant more amount of open space or green space than what is being shown on this current one. Is there anything that you can speak to around how you offset those those changes in regards to just open space and green space? I felt like the prior design had a very community-centered feel to it, where if you were going, you didn't have to live in this neighborhood to be able to enjoy it, to want to walk through it and be a part of it. I look at this, and and I'm not saying that that won't be still, people won't do that, it just, to me, it seems more of like a neighborhood, like you're not going to get a whole lot of outsiders coming through to enjoy the area. Anything that you can add to speak to those points, I'd appreciate it.
Not so much on the picture, between the two pictures, but we do meet the same open space requirements that we were said we were going to meet before, not the pictures, but the actual data. I understand what you're saying.
The thresholds, I mean, are you talking your overall green spaces calculations do not reduce at all, or are you just saying it's a threshold?
Sheet one oh one up here on the chart, I can't read it, it's too small for me.
We got that an hour and a half prior to the meeting, I didn't get a chance to check it out.
Understand, but we do, and I will say, too, the way this is working, these are alley-loaded townhomes, those townhomes are facing green areas with walking trails in between every all the townhomes, so trying to create a sense of community as you are living on your front porch, coming out and visiting with your neighbors, not having the typical roadway in the alley alley in the back, just asphalt everywhere. So the green space you're seeing there, not your backyards, those are your front yards.
Like, you're going to have, you know, ton lots out there, things of that nature, well, it's this area here, so it's a totally different concept than how you normally develop these communities. So the green spaces are done in a different way. And again, instead of having large condominium buildings there or apartment buildings, we have townhouse buildings, and a lot of townhouse buildings either face the street here with an alley behind them, or they have green spaces in between them. So you can see how that's laid out, and again, you can see this area right here, this is an amenity center for the neighborhood, and of course, in all the green over here next to the park as well.
Thank you, sir. And to that point, I mean, I I do recognize that there is, again, there's space available to the residents of the community, a pool, a clubhouse, all of that. I guess for me, just the original idea of city center is more of all encompassing the city. There's options, there's staying now the front phase one, sure, there'll be all of that, it just, to me, it seems more of a neighborhood in the center of town versus something that is an amenity to the community, but that is just my two cents.
Have different type product, and it wouldn't necessarily always just be apartments or condos. So that's one reason we put the different types that we could do in there. The only type that's a little different is the park under townhouses that are on the street level, and so we've discussed that with them differently, different times about making sure that they would be able to have two-story or three stories that would have park under.
Mr. Chairman, just one more comment from my side. I just want to be clear on kind of the point that I'm making and, you know, my challenges with this. It's not the plan, I understand market conditions change, I understand plans change and things change. My point is, we're asking to be to judge whether this is in substantial compliance, and to me, it's not, it's a big enough change. I don't necessarily have a problem with the plan, but I think it needs to be an amendment to the master plan so that it can go through the process and the public can comment on it and go back to the board of commissioners. Again, I I think the overall town center project's a great project, I want to see it move forward, and I understand the need for the changes, and it's less dense, and I think there it gives a lot of, there's a lot of positives to it. I just think if we follow our ordinance by the letter of the law, it needs to go through the full change. That's that's my point to everything.
I would like to note, if you, within our zoning ordinance, if there's a disapproval or you feel the need to disapprove this, if the planning commission finds that the site development plan or subdivision plat does not meet the test of substantial compliance set forth in subsection ten dash two oh three point five, or does not comply with any other standards of review, it shall disapprove the plan and shall note in their motion for disapproval the grounds on which the plan was disapproved. So if any of you feel that, at at the time that you make the motion, please give the exact reasoning for why you're making that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McGowan, can I borrow the?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I will have mine here next next meeting. Could we go back to the plan that was, yes? These buildings right there? Could those possibly have been apartments?
They were apartments designed, and that is parking lots behind them for parking. That's exactly what we planned in there.
with these, with these buildings being apartments and this being concrete parking, I think your new plan is much better. That's all I have to say.
As I look at the original master development plan, there's a unique sense of community that's generated here. It's an important piece of community because of where it is and what it means to this community, and I think as an earlier comment, this actually could be a focused area, you know, you're you're going to shop, you're going to eat, you're going to participate in the commercial areas, and if you feel so led to walk the community, you know, that that'd be a nice option to have. I do agree, it's probably nice to not have so much paved impervious areas, I appreciate that, but the the new development, to me, has changed so much to where it just really appeals as a standard neighborhood. It could be anywhere, any town USA. It doesn't speak to me as our town center here. I know you can achieve a lot with architectural character and create that that Main Street feel, but the amount of variation from what was originally voted on and and really got the excitement, everybody, I I don't feel that excitement when I look at the current townhouses. It's, I I also agree, I like the front that that's created, but it's to the extent that there's just not enough variation, and to me, there probably should have been maybe a little bit of a hybrid transition from, that's not so stark between this highly variable layout to what now is very structural, very rigid, it almost, you know, kind of takes on that.
I'd recommend viewing Barry Farms and what we've done also at West Haven. Very similar road pattern, very similar product, almost identical.
I understand.
And again, it, when you do the alleyways and you do the street parking in the front, it, you know, it creates streetscape instead of a parking lot, so we we think it really goes along with the regulating plan, that's what a regulating plan was established, instead of this particular plan saying, so.
Okay.
Think it goes back to regulating.
If we were to go, let me ask one more question, if you don't mind, please. If we could advance to sheet, is it C six zero one, C one zero? It'd be the first plan layout. Sorry, it's within the new section.
Which page are you trying to get to, Mr. McNee?
It was a.
I only put three in this.
Okay, well, that's fine, if you could just, that'll that'll work, thank you very much. It was a C one point zero zero, this one has color to it. Back to the original thought, if we were to achieve a condition of approval so that we could satisfy the compliance, I'm trying to understand better how how can we get closer to that compliance by providing a little bit more mixed use for that that original feel? It's subjective, I don't, my opinion's going to be different from other people on the board, but I'm just curious, to what extent would you offer modifications to the different types of structures? Was it just that one row of townhouses?
Bree, do you mind going to the plan that has a whole lot of purple on there? Thank you. Mr. Chestine would like to speak for just a moment.
So, and and I agree, as as you all speak and and look at the plan and and look at the illustrated plan, and then you look at the regulatory plan and what is being presented tonight, we've looked at the images, I just wanted to clearly read off what the regulatory plan says, which is on the screen above you or behind you and in front of you. And again, this is the approved master development plan, and so when we look at the layout, I just wanted to call out the wording, it says, "The individual block layouts within this plan overlay development are for illustration purposes only. The regulating plan and distribution of housing topology shall be flexible to respond to physical site constraints and user needs, community desires, and a changing market, so long as they meet the intent of the regulations and guidelines within." And the reason I just wanted to bring that up is, you know, as we look at the regulating plan, each of these areas, they were given the option to say, I'm, I can come in and say, I can put housing type seven and nine here, or I can put three, four, five, and six here. So when the master development plan was approved, it provided a great deal of latitude and flexibility as far as what they could bring in for these development plans like they've done tonight. I agree with you all, it is different, and we can see that, and as staff, though, when we read this, it's it's difficult for staff to say, you're held to this when it says, essentially, these are for illustration purposes, and they're giving three to four options in each of these locations to say they can bring in any one of those three or four housing types within that particular area of the development. So, and it and it does say, "Townhomes and single-family homes shall be dispersed and integrated throughout the community," so that's the last part of that second paragraph. So just to give you a little insight from from where we looked at it and what we had to read, this is a regulatory plan, however, they were given a lot of latitude and and flexibility in terms of which housing types would go where, and so that was, when we looked at that, and that's what we had to go on to look at in terms of, the master development plan gives them a lot of latitude and a lot of space to be able to say, we would like to put this type here, and this type here, and this type here. So essentially, the regulatory plan did not specify in this particular area, it has to be three, over here it has to be four, here it has to be five. They were essentially given anywhere from two to four options in each one of these areas, and it gave them the flexibility to bring in a new a new plan.
Hey, if I may, so my client, Lennar Homes, is is the one that's wanting to develop and build this this portion you see tonight. They came to us and said, here's the development plan, and like staff said, these are your parameters, this is your boundaries, and these are your options. So we devised a plan based on that document to create what we have tonight. So I I know there's a feeling you see from the old picture versus the new picture, and I understand that conversation, at the same token, like staff said, is that we feel like we're in substantial compliance because of what the document gives us, and that's a great thing about these PODs, PUDs, SPs, wherever we're at, is they give some boundaries for cities, and they also give us some flexibility to, you know, run with the market deviations and and whatever the topo and the streams and the wetlands happen, so we're able to have this flexibility and not have to come back to council or commission, whoever it may be, every single time a change happens. So we feel like we're in substantial compliance here, and we hope you do, too, and would ask for your approval tonight.
On this particular plan, you're showing nine structure types. Do we have nine structure types in the new development plan?
Those were nine options, we do not, we have less than that.
And how many options do we have in the current plan?
Three, two?
You count the section out front, too.
Oh, true.
We have, we got townhouses in the front, twenty-five townhouses.
We have mixed use on the front up there, and then we also have commercial, and within a mixed use building, that would be more of an apartment building right there, would not be a condominium building.
So how many types do you think you have now in your current plan?
We kind of live works, we do have make live work, then we have a true mixed use on the front, and then we have apartment types up on the front and townhouses on the front, then three more types in the back.
Okay, all right, thanks, sir. Mr. Page.
Yeah, I just have one more comment, and I do appreciate the staff's additional comments on on the flexibility and the notes and everything, because that's very helpful. I wasn't here when that went through. You know, my my only challenge is, this is one of the biggest, most important things going on in Fairview, and this original plan was done, you know, going through public hearings and going through the planning commission and two readings at the board, and that's the only thing I'm struggling with, is making a substantial enough change that looks drastically different without going through the same old process. But I I hear everything you're saying, I understand the reasons that it's happening and everything, that's that's my only struggle, but I do appreciate that the notes on the plan gave a lot of additional flexibility relative to how this could be developed, so thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Madam Mayor.
When I first saw the new plan, I will say that, you know, it just looked a little more congested to me, but as I really reviewed it and realized, this is my opinion, but apartments don't feel community to me, so I really appreciated the fact that they were townhomes. You've got a lot of grass features and places for the the neighbors to play with their children, other children to play with their children in grassy areas. If you look at that that plan, the original plan, the apartment buildings with all the pavement, I don't think that that's appealing to actually have families spend time on that open space that's actually pavement for parking. So in my opinion, I feel like this new plan gives more of a family feel with grass and the parking underneath, where you don't have a bunch of pavement, and it makes it look, if if you really sit down and compare both, it makes it look like there's a lot of open space, but actually, in my opinion, it is pavement for parking, and I just like the new plan because I just have, I just, it just has a better feel, and to know that it is less dense is appealing to me as well.
This is for the staff. So on here, you say they're still not in compliance with standard two and eight, is that still the fact, they're still not in compliance?
Mr. Callie, so the the resolution that would be adopted tonight says all staff comments to be addressed prior to the construction plan submission, and during the course of discussion tonight, staff recommended the language of an of a condition of approval that type three structures be changed to type four park under townhome, park under townhomes for this phase of the development plan. So even though it's not in the report, in the discussion, it's in the record, that condition of approval is incorporated into the staff comments, so that, I think, would alleviate those two and eight concerns.
If if type three were to be changed to type four, our substantial compliance, based on what we identified in our staff report, would be, everything would be in substantial compliance.
So would that have to be an amendment to the motion, what he just said?
Yes, that that'd probably be the cleanest way, absolutely. So an amendment to. So an amendment to the motion to change type three structures to type four, park under townhomes for this phase of the development plan would be the motion.
To amend based on what he's just read or said?
All right, you're making the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Jones, would you please call the vote on the motion to amend residential development plan with a substantial compliance address?
Mr. Magner, just a point order. Ryan and Mr. McGowan, are you agreeable to that amendment?
Continue, please. Thank you, Mr. Greer.
Don't we have to vote on the amendment first and then the?
Yes, the, this will be a vote on the amendment only, not the ultimate.
Correct. So this is an amendment for type three. I guess we are incorporating type four in lieu of type three. Do we have a designated number of units that we could quantify this? Or is there a particular area that you would like to?
I believe the amendment would be all type three units on the current plan would be changed to type four park under townhomes on this phase of the development plan.
Okay, thank you. So point of clarification, we are voting on the amendment, and the amendment will be all type three structures will become type four. Any objection to that amendment statement?
Give us one moment.
Thank you.
Ethan's is just going to bring up a different plan sheet, so we can just point out exactly where those units are located.
Perfect, thank you. I think that level of clarity will help both the applicant as well as the planning commission.
Bree, if you could bring click share up on all of the monitors. So... All right, so type three. Where's the good one?
The darker purple.
Right here are where type three units are. So it works. Everybody look at the screen up here. These are type three units. And these are type three units around the corner. So those units would become park under townhomes versus what they are today, which are street parked and parking lot townhomes.
Are there any other type three within the development at the moment? Just so that we're not talking about any other?
Not within phase two of this development.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. Back to the amendment vote. So we are voting on the amendment in response to substantial compliance that all type three structures will become type four within the phase two development plan. Ms. Jones, would you please call the vote?
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
That amendment passes seven to zero. Back to the original conversation, is there any other additional questions on substantial compliance? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Can we please call a vote on item PC twenty-three, twenty-four?
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
New business, item number three, PC resolution, PC twenty-four dash twenty-four, residential development plan, Bowie Meadows, phase two, ninety-nine point seven four acres, map forty-three, parcels twenty-six. Current zoning R twenty pod. Project, or excuse me, property owner, McGowan Family LP. Make a motion to approve PC twenty-four, twenty-four.
Second.
Callie Anderson? Mr. Greer, would you please read the staff report?
Bowie Meadows, phase two. The applicant is Ryan Lovelace. The owner is the McGowan Family LP. The developer is Lenar. Ryan Lovelace has submitted a site development plan for phase two of the Bowie Meadows residential development. The Bowie Meadows residential development contains a total of one hundred and sixty-five single-family detached residential lots with, within two phases. The entire development contains one hundred and twenty-four point five four acres, while phase two contains ninety-nine point seven four acres of the, of the development. Phase two contains one hundred and twenty-one single-family residential lots with a gross density of point nine seven dwelling units per acre. Also, phase two contains six open space areas that total forty-two point four six acres, or forty-two point six percent of the land within phase two. Additionally, to existing public rights of way, Parkland Drive and Olson Ridge will be extended from phase one of Bowie Meadows into phase two, and there will also be four new public rights of way created within phase two. No portion of the property is located within a flood hazard area as shown on FEMA firm panel four-one-eight-seven-C zero-one-three-five-F. The submitted site plan, site development plan has been found in substantial compliance by our staff with the approved master development plan as required in section ten, two oh three point five of the Fairview zoning ordinance. All adjacent properties are located within the city of Fairview. The properties located to the north and east contain single-family residential land uses, while the properties to the west, the properties to the west are currently vacant. And the property to the south is the northern boundary of Bowie Nature Park. The property to the east is phase one of the Bowie Meadows development. The properties to the east are zoned RS twenty pod, Bowie Meadows phase one, and R twenty-one and two family residential. The properties to the north are zoned RS forty, single-family residential. The properties to the west are zoned RSM forty, single-family residential, and RS forty, single-family residential. The property to the south, Bowie Nature Park, is zoned AR fifteen A. The Fairview Forward twenty forty comp plan designates the parcel that contains Bowie Meadows phase two as new residential medium neighborhood. This classification notes the appropriate land use as single-family detached residential. Our staff recommends the planning commission approve the Bowie Meadows phase two site development plan in order to create one hundred and twenty-one single-family detached lots, six open spaces, the extension of two public rights of way, stormwater infrastructure, and all necessary utility infrastructure as shown on plans resubmitted on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, with the conditions included in the approval of all staff comments to be addressed prior to construction plan submission.
Representative, please restate your name and address, please.
Good evening. Ryan Lovelace, CSTG. I think we have some very minor comments left, and I appreciate working with staff and here to answer your questions and ask for approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, questions from planning commission?
Bree, just a note for the staff. This document that you see on the screen right now is their controlling document, is their approved master development plan. Bree, if you'll go to the next slide. This would be their submitted phase two residential development plan for this property.
Mr. Lovelace, question for you, sir. Do you have a pull-off area or location for the mailbox, post office, community boxes?
I believe it's down in the bottom right corner of the plan, that open space area.
Okay.
Sorry, there you go. Somewhere in that open space area is where we're planning on doing something.
That brown, like, open space up toward your right-hand side, that's where we propose to put mailboxes.
Open space three.
It's the, kind of the, yeah, okay.
Right there.
Again, those type of areas, we usually put a town lot, probably a dog park as well.
I will add, it's nice to see the open space more integrated in with the development. We haven't been seeing that lately. And it's kind of a, personally, I think it's, it's a nice and it's appealing type of community. Questions, comments from planning commission? Hearing none, thank you very much. Ms. Jones, please call the vote.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Motion carries? Thank you. Onto bonds and letters of credit. There are none indicated on the agenda. Last section on the agenda, there are reports and discussions, starting with the city planning staff. Any comments tonight?
Thank you all for your diligent work. We're very excited to get started with TPUDC for our new zoning ordinance. Likely, the board of commissioners will see a contract roll across your desk soon to authorize our city manager to, to work with that group. And we're very excited for the future of Fairview and what a new zoning ordinance could help shape the, how the town looks in twenty to forty years from now, how our kids will grow up here, just like several of us did. Just a reminder, our next planning commission meeting is July ninth. There is no board of commissioner meeting on July fourth. It'll be after, the first board of commissioner meeting for the month of July will be after the planning commission meeting on July eleventh. So, thank you all. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. City manager, Mr. Doherty?
Thank you. No comments tonight.
Thank you. City engineer?
Thank you all. Thank you all for your questions, consideration. Again, if you ever have questions, my phone number is in every email, so feel free to reach out. Thank you all.
Thank you. City attorney?
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Last item here is planning commission roundtable. I'll just start down with Mr. Pape. Any comments tonight?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McDonald?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Callie?
Just want to thank the staff for their hard work and Mr. Magner for wrangling this whole issue tonight.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Schulist?
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Ms. Schilling? Thank you. Mayor Anderson?
Will we, when will we be filling and voting on a new chairman?
Currently, there is one member whose term expires at the end of this month, and they have indicated that they are not planning to reapply for the planning commission. It is our chairman, Ms. Emily Senyard. Unfortunately, she was unable to make it here for her last meeting tonight. The board of commission will fill this seat on the twentieth, June twentieth. A new planning commission member will be appointed. And at our next planning commission meeting in July ninth, we will appoint a new chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hogan, for being here, and thank you, staff, for all your hard work, and Kevin and Curtis. It, it was, you know, a long night, but I think we had a lot of good discussion, and that's, that's what's warranted with everything that we approve now, and especially getting city center right. I saw that new plan, and I was like, wow, that's a lot. But then I realized it went from apartments to townhomes, which made me feel better because I just don't think apartments are a, a good feel for our center of town. That's just me. So I am excited about this new plan, and I think our city center, we just had a wonderful groundbreaking ceremony this past Friday that it, it was amazing. We've got a lot of pictures online. Go to, you know, you can always go to the city of Fairview webpage, Facebook page, and see the pictures and just see everything that's going on in our community. Tomorrow morning at eight-thirty, Patty Carroll's here with us tonight, and she's hosting a business coffee. This will be something that happens every second Wednesday of the month at eight-thirty, highlighting different business opportunities and businesses in our community. So let's show support and come out and, you know, just check that out. Thank you, Rachel, for all your hard work. You always do such a good job. And thank you for our ladies that have stuck with us throughout the night and everyone at home, and all of our commissioners here. I appreciate all your hard work as well.
Thank you, mayor. Appreciate bringing forward the work session earlier. I think that was exciting to see. Kind of makes us wish that ours was as well-developed now, so that, that'll be welcoming. I would just add, I think, based on most of the members of this board, we would definitely welcome the opportunity to be part of a working session to kind of help highlight some of the challenges that we face over the past couple of years of interpretation, and how can we address that in, in the new one moving forward, rather than seeing the draft and then reacting. That would be my one preference. I too agree and appreciate everybody's conversation tonight. Some of it was a little difficult, but at the end, it was constructive, and I just appreciate everybody's time. Thank you. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Put the motion adjourn.
Adjourn.